So for anyone watching, we are just now getting started. If you will, oh, I will call to order the Greater Albany Public School Board of Directors meeting on Monday, April 5th at 7:13 PM. And Chris has put our flag up, so if you'll all join me with in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, Chris. All right, and I am leading in Board Books, so those of you board members that are following can go there, or you are welcome to navigate on your own. I just wanted to mention that we have bumped up our comments from the public, so we will be doing those now. And that was at a request from several folks, and then the board chatted about it a little bit. Although our public comments do come in, and the board members actually get those in advance of the meeting, and we all read those prior to the meeting, there was a perception that maybe those comments weren't heard prior to us taking action in our meetings, and so just for the sake of the transparency of that, we wanted to put those up a little further in our meeting agenda. And as a reminder, our public comments are able to be submitted by noon on the day of our meetings, while we are navigating our meetings via Zoom, so anything can be submitted by noon, and then we read all of those comments in our meetings. Similar to our live meetings, we have folks read those to us, and then we listen and provide any additional information that can't be read into our minutes. And then, while we don't discuss all of the public comments in our meetings, just because of the length of our meetings, we do have conversations about those after the fact and address those that we need to, through the superintendent and the district staff. So tonight, we had one public comment submitted, and this was Francois Howard of Albany. Hello, I speak for families with children in the Comprehensive Distance Learning Model, or CDL. To sum it, our children are being placed in an inequitable position. We were informed last week that the schedule is going to change yet again to accommodate a lengthier school day. That change would guarantee our elementary CDL students lose their current instructor for the last seven and a half weeks of school. The refrain we have heard during this school year is the desire to keep things consistent for the children and to avoid lots of changes. However, this is not the case for the CDL children who have already undergone a scheduling change, and yet again have to undergo another big change with the loss of their homeschool instructor. Why should we upset everyone's schedule for the last seven and a half weeks of school just so that hybrid learning days can be lengthened? Where is the strong desire to keep things stable in such an unsettling year? Is it to support certain children at the expense of others? Please consider burdening the CDL. Please reconsider burdening the CDL children, especially the elementary students, with yet another major change this academic year. Thank you for reading this respectfully, Francois, I think is how you pronounce the name. So, thank you for your submission, and we will move into board business. And we, as board, need to kind of discuss our transition to in-person board meetings. We had talked about discussing that come the first part of April, understanding that schools and everyone else in the district would be back in session by the end of the month, and so we had considered moving forward with some of our board meetings in person as well. We will still have the same limitations that we've had in the past as far as options for us, in that we have to social distance when we're there, wear masks, and do all of that, so our space is somewhat smaller. But I think that we kind of need to have that discussion. We've heard several different things, how if we do those meetings without the public present to start with, and then continue to have them recorded and available the way we have been. But we meet in person, and then see how we can gradually kind of move into inviting people maybe in to read public comments or go through that process a little bit. Were there thoughts from other board members on what had been presented in the past? We just need to probably start making some plans for how we want to see that happen. And I do see that Michael joined us, so we got you, okay. Any comments from board members about thoughts on meetings? I think the last thing that we had talked about was going back with the board members and district staff, the group basically on these meetings, and then continuing to livestream and see how they go to start with. Director Ward.
Yeah, so yeah, I would say that, I mean, I think it's a, as we move our children back into schools, it's appropriate for us to do the same. And that said, though, there have, aside from the room service that I mentioned earlier for my snacks and meals, there are some good things that I hope we retain, and one of them is the live streaming. The other would be allowing people to submit public comments, not just, you know, coming in person, but keeping that aspect of public comment as well. And then I guess I would just ask, I would just ask staff how much, like, there's work that goes into preparing and putting on a board meeting, and that lands on staff. And so I just want to ask if you're up to that, if there are considerations that we should have in regards to what staff is able to accomplish right now.
We're certainly up to it, it would definitely be a transitional time period, so the board would likely be meeting, if you're still able to meet in the same meeting space, and just looking at, just looking at the screen right now, look at the number of people in this call, all of whom are in our meetings every time we're together. And so making sure that we have that physical distancing space for that room, and it is likely to Director Ward's comment about public comment. It is likely that public comment would either need to be people kind of waiting outside of the boardroom in a line to come in and give public comment, and then also give some sort of virtual public comment as well, because it is unlikely that you will have room in the spaces that we have available for you to have at this time, guests in the audience are presenting to you. So that is what we would be recommending as the transition. I would also recommend that we move toward the public reading their own comment, even if it's virtual, and that can help with engagement by the public as well. But yeah, so we ask, we can make it work, and no, it will not look like it has before.
I just think that we have overcome an accessibility hurdle, actually, by receiving public comment the way that we have, and I want to make sure that we don't lose that when we go back to in-person.
Yeah, I agree. I think we still will have people that can't attend meetings that would like to be able to provide public comments, so I think that's a good option for us to continue. Were there other board questions or comments about process at this point, or thoughts, ideas? I think we can start that direction, and then we can always see how we continue to grow. I know we've been offered some other locations and facilities, and that gets a little more challenging for our staff to manage them for us, and for us to manage the live streaming and some other things. And so we appreciate that people have volunteered other spaces, maybe, to allow for us to have that. But just with the nature of our technology and things like that, we would have to probably look into that a little bit more in depth at some point, and that just probably hasn't been the highest of our priorities right now as we're getting kids back to school. But we can still have those conversations as we start having our meetings too.
So for clarity's sake, so would you like to have your next board meeting be in-person for the folks that typically are participating directly in the board meeting?
I think, yeah, I think that, it sounds like that was consensus from everyone. It looks like I'm not seeing anybody shaking heads no, correct? Okay, so I think we're good, yeah, so let's plan for that, and then, and I think what we will do initially is continue, do we want to try to have a discussion for that meeting about public comments in person? Or do we want to plan for public comments for that meeting to continue to be the way we've had them for now, while we have a little bit more time to plan for how we might be able to get people back in to joining us for those meetings to relearn?
It would be helpful to keep it, keep it with them submitting it until...
We will be in-person, we'll let the district staff manage that, prep for us, and then we will continue to livestream, and we will continue to have public comments provided electronically in advance, and we will read those at the next meeting, and then we'll be working for the following meeting to try to come up with some options for the public engagement a little bit more with the public comments. Okay, I think we're good to go. So if there's any questions that come up, you can reach out to me directly, and we'll work on those plans. So watch your email, folks, because we'll have information coming out about the meeting. All right, and then we're on to superintendent comments, so Superintendent, go.
Thank you so much, Chair Bussner. So I am trying to navigate between a couple screens here. I wanted to give you an update on two items tonight in particular, so, and then a third item came up while, came up over the weekend, so just to make sure that we're all in the know, so we did have a positive COVID case with an athlete who is part of one of our high school athletic teams, and so that has impacted athletic teams at both South Albany High School and at West Albany High School. All athletes and adults who may have been potential exposures have been notified directly by us, and we have been in contact. Nurse Rachel has been working with both Lynn County Public Health and then also with the Oregon Health Authority around the circumstances. Because of the timing of the potential, the potential for spread, we have two other high schools who also were in contest against our team during the time period that the student athlete may have been contagious. So we have notified their teams, I have spoken with both of those superintendents myself, and all of the protocols are in place and procedures are in place. So if we had folks who attended those games, we have verified with the Health Authority that the people in attendance who were in the stands do not need to quarantine as a result of that. So just wanted to make sure that you were all in the loop. I know that we communicated that to you earlier, but wanted to make sure that you were caught up. Do you have any questions about that before we move on? Okay, so... I'm trying to think of where to start, I think I'll start with, one of the biggest question that folks have had right now is, oh my gosh, what is happening with changes? And how will that impact my child? And do I still have choice to, do I get to choose again? Now that our hybrid plan is bringing students back for four days a week, do I get to kind of recast my ballot for whether or not my child goes to school in the hybrid model, or whether they stay in comprehensive distance learning? And so we let staff know right before spring break that the governor's announcement had made it such that we were likely to have more flexibility during spring break, met with the Oregon Department of Education, where again, there, it was clear that there is going to be more opportunity, the three-feet rule really giving us a lot more, a lot more freedom in how we bring students back and thinking creatively on how we could do that. So staff who were working through spring break, and there are many of us at the district office that don't, you know, we're not on vacation during spring break, because those are our work times, we're working together to try and kind of solve this major puzzle of whether or not we could bring students back potentially for fuller days, and then could we also, if we did that, could we be more days a week, or make sure that it was four days a week? So a special shout out to our brand-new transportation supervisor Cindy Moran for being the puzzle genius and really being able to figure out transportation. You'll find that whenever you make a major change like this to a large school system, it's, people refer to it as the three Bs, well, four Bs. It's balls, so like athletics, beans, so food, whether you can serve food and where food needs to be served, balls, beans, and buses, three Bs. And one of those three things can get you completely derailed from doing the massive work that you need to do, and actually, that's a really good thing for you to think about in terms of whenever we're going through a change as a system, the school district has limitations that are set by those three things on how we can make things work. So I want to say thank you to Cindy Moran for figuring out the transportation puzzle, and to Kathy Pitzer for figuring out how to serve meals to students on campus, both breakfast and lunch, and also to continue to have some of our off-site sites open for students who are in distance learning. Because you remember Nutrition Services, we've had a number of satellite sites available for kids to pick up their food, and it was, it has been important to us and a high value to continue to serve the community as best as we can, even after we have students back on campus. So the changes that will start for elementary, well, a couple things. So first, elementary school started Monday and Tuesday of last week, and it was very exciting to see those little kids on their first day back. I met the very first kindergartner who walked onto the Nays Campus, the North Albany Campus, and she was so excited and ready to go, and her parents were videotaping her, and it was darling, and you know, you forget how small they come. But it was, felt very much like any first day of school, as staff were meeting students to bring them off of the buses. So the students who are in distance learning right now have an alignment with the students who are in school in person. So kids are either in morning or AM hybrid learning, if they're elementary students, and they follow the same schedule if they're in CDL. So part of what you heard in the letter from our parent is concern about when we make the shift that we're able to make because of the three-foot distancing, that it will necessarily change many students' teachers. And some of the students who are in hybrid right now, and students who are in distance learning, will find themselves with new teachers, and that was a value judgment that we ended up making, feeling that it was more important for students to have access to the, to in-person experiences of the adults who can lead them through academically and socially emotionally, and we recognize that that is very difficult. It's important to note a couple things, however, that, one is that the schedule, the comprehensive distance learning schedule that the students have been on, it will change slightly, and likely their times that they're meeting together will be longer. So they'll be, comprehensive distance learning will not be as compacted as it is right now. Kids will be together longer online, but we don't have them together online for the full amount of time that kids are going to school in person, because the kids who are going to school in person have breaks such as lunch and recess, where we wouldn't be doing that with comprehensive distance learning. So we're trying to make sure that the distance learning time is long enough to cover the same information that is getting covered in the in-person learning time as well. And the structure is very difficult, and so what we've talked to our elementary principals about is how do we do the warmest handoff possible to new teachers if students' teachers need to change? How do we really do that thoughtfully and warmly, so students don't feel like they're going into a classroom with a stranger, but feel like it's someone that they already know and have built relationship with? So that next shift will happen on April 26th, and on our website, you can already see the K-5 bell times for every school already on the website. And then we've updated the timeline that you guys have seen for a year now, and it just indicates that on April 26th, we'll have school Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, and Friday for our K-5 students. So middle school, similar structure, so middle school right now is also, they also started this week, so today, Monday, and tomorrow, the seventh and eighth graders will join the sixth graders, and they too are in AM and PM cohorts right now. But on April 26th, they will move into a full-day schedule as well, with Wednesdays being asynchronous. Our middle school schedule will be a six-period day, and all the teachers will have a common prep at the end of their day, or at the beginning of their day, depending on which school they work at. And so again, you can see the bell times on here. Now, one of the challenges is lunch for each of these levels. How do we, how do we plan out lunch when we have so many students? So as we go up the grades, right, the numbers of kids grows as well. So our elementary schools have a lot of kids in them, but they're doing some problem solving, and Assistant Superintendent Harlan can answer questions about that if you end up having them, on how to get kids to eat, but still keep six feet of distance, because there needs to be six feet of distance during eating times, whereas only three feet of distance during classroom learning times. And then at the middle school, similarly, they are actually doing, I talked to Principal Heisler Kalpuya, he's going to run the equivalent of six lunches. So there will be a sixth-grade A lunch and a sixth-grade B lunch, and then a seventh-grade A lunch and a seventh-grade B lunch, and eighth-grade A and B. And that's the only way you can do it, to get the cohort small enough to be able to run the kids through food, get them the food, keep them spaced enough, and continue the day moving. So I want to give special shout-outs to our administrators for whom this, some of them, this comes very naturally to, just like those of us who are in the board meeting right now. Some people do puzzles really well, and some people you sit down with a puzzle, and it's just not their gig. And we keep throwing puzzles at these folks, whether they're good at it or not, doesn't matter, they get to solve it. And so they, we have great people with extremely strong skillsets, and part of those skillsets are networking with each other and knowing when to ask a colleague to partner with them for problem solving, and the middle school has done really a nice job with that. And then we get to the high school, and really, the changes for the high school are probably the smallest. So Albany Options started with the elementary school kids, so they too have been in class now for a week, and I'm excited, I'm going to go visit them tomorrow, whoop-whoop. And, and they have, so they have a bit of normalcy, and the change for them will not be as significant. For South and for West, our ninth-grade students will continue to have their, well, half of the kids their first day on April 15th, the other half of the kids on April 16th, and then the first day of in-person for everybody will be April 19th for our high schools, which is what we planned. And instead of beginning in the every-other-day, the Monday, Thursday, or the Tuesday, Friday model, kids will go to school four days a week. So a fairly easy transition for high schools, though, again, you might not realize what that puzzle was. So also an extremely difficult puzzle to resolve, because they really wanted to make sure kids could get the classes they still needed. And not all kids are going back into school, and if they came back in equal increments, it would be great. So if we had 50% of kids who need ninth-grade English, who wanted to do it in distance learning, and 50% of them who wanted to do it in-person hybrid, that's super easy, because then we could assign one teacher to each, right, to make it simple. Unfortunately, it doesn't work that way, so we have 75 to 80% of kids wanting to come back to in-person hybrid, and then smaller numbers in distance learning, and so we need, because those numbers are smaller, and you have 20, well, you might have 15 kids from a school in ninth-grade English, they may need to have another teacher teaching that class, and that's particularly true. The high schools don't have an experience, a problem with that, with keeping their teachers teaching their own students, but at elementary, we've definitely had to be creative and problem-solved to make sure that we take care of that. So again, all the bell times on the website, you can see the timelines there as well. So are there questions about opening before I give a quick, like, and I'm not sure summer is on the agenda as a separate item or not, but...
I am not seeing any questions on Board Book, and I don't see any hands up, so I think we're good, we're able to move on.
Okay, fantastic, so then, oh, I see, it's down, it's at K-1, so I'm good. So that has been the bulk of our work, is really planning for our kids to come back. We are thrilled for them to do so. The staff who are on this call had the good fortune of being able to go out and see kids as they've started. Our drivers, our transportation drivers have been incredible. I've been very impressed watching them as they navigate through a new schedule, and I'm super proud of our facilities and maintenance crew as well, the work that they had to do to get those buildings ready, and one of the things, so again, I think it's hard maybe for community members to understand the number of changes that happen with every shift that we hear from the governor, but we had stripped all of the furniture out of our schools, because everyone needed six feet apart, okay? Now, when people need three feet apart, we need to get the furniture back in, but what furniture? Well, not necessarily the furniture we had in the first place, because those were tables, so we need more desks, so where do we find the desks or the single tables? And how do we find ones that are small enough for the kinders, or big enough for the high school kids? And so a lot, a lot, a lot of work by our facilities crew, and their spring break was moving furniture, and they haven't had a break. So when we think about typical vacations, they run a year where they are working more on the schedule that I am working on, so they're kind of everydayers. And throughout all of this pandemic, they have been so professional, worked so hard, and I just appreciate it very much. So if you, if you know somebody who's a custodian, be sure to say thank you, because I'm sure they've pulled a load that they never imagined they would get the opportunity to pull. Thank you.
So does that conclude your report? Excellent, I still not seen any questions here, so I'm going to keep us moving. And if I can get in here, we are on to our budget update.
Oh, boy.
Yeah.
So you should have a sheet of paper there in the budget book that I call my budget box, or your budget box, actually. We're hard at work on the budget, we've got, I think we've got the data set in good order. Now it's working on getting stuff out of the, out of this new model, and, and, and so what I'm, I'm working on spreads, on worksheets for each of the budget owners and meeting with them and talking about the details of their budget, that's kind of where we are right now. The budget box itself, I would call it squishier than usual. I usually like to have, you know, here's the hard walls, you've got to solve your problems within these hard walls. Well, this is not a hard wall year, this is a squishy wall year. But let me just walk through this really quickly, because my whole goal here is to sort of paint that picture and give you some sense of the things that move the walls a bit. So this is the general fund, first of all. We'll talk a little bit about the grant funds in a minute, but this is the general fund, and just the typical thing you've seen, resources and requirements. You've got a couple of years of history. Then you have the, for this year, the budget in the general fund and the projection. This is the projection you saw last month. So it's a little old right now. So Ashley's still working on, on getting a newer one, but it's still a reasonable projection. We talked about it. But I do think there's some possibility that the ending balance might be higher. Of course, there's always a possibility it'll be lower. So I think it's reasonable at this point. So the essential assumptions that are, that we started with on this budget is to keep staffing at basically the same level that it is now, given the uncertainty of what our enrollment is going to be. And I'm going to talk about that in a minute. So that's the first basic assumption. Then I made a series of other assumptions that I've listed down under what's called the general fund cost drivers. So the first one, I was happy to make this one, the PERS rates are going down. And that saves us about a million four in the general fund. Also, the, the bond repayment fund that we pay, the original PERS bond has worked up a pretty good balance. So we're going to reduce the rate that we're charging against payroll going into this budget. Might be able to do a little more than this, but we can at least do this. The seven, it was seven and a half percent this year, and so I'm lowering it to seven. So that's about point three to about three hundred and twenty thousand in savings. Then I gave one step to each of the bargaining units and a fifty dollar health cap increase, which is the kind of thing you, you've done on an annual basis. And you can see the cost, one point two million and about half a million for that. And basically no growth in other costs. There's a lot of internal shifting going on. By the time we get it to you, there'll be a lot of that. But ba- basically no growth in other costs at this point. And so then, to, to give a sense of the the, how, how this box is squishy, I did, I made two alternate assumptions. One, on different levels of enrollment and the other on no cola and paying a cola. So you can just see the bo- the box you're in. So there's a little chart there. And the first three columns are no cola and the last three are a two percent cola. And then underneath each of the set of boxes of that, those two general categories. There are three different enrollment estimates, and they're the same on both sets of columns. But, but the first one is what I call the, the official enrollment estimate. This is the one that we gave the state some time ago that they use for the state school fund estimate. So that's why I call it the official one because it's the it's the one that's in the estimate that state has for us for how much state school fund we're gonna get. The second one is what I call the December estimate. It's an estimate that was done just before I got here that Russ did. That, and then the third one is what I call the pre-COVID estimate. This is the estimate that Shannon did back a year and a half ago when nobody knew anything about COVID coming. So it's like, what would normal growth have been? And just give you a sense of what those are. When in October this year, when the kids came back, our October enrollment, a, a lot of kids, first of all, shifted out of the brick and mortar school into AOL. But about four hundred didn't show up at all. And they didn't go into AOL, they didn't go into, they just didn't show up at all. And the, this official enrollment estimate assumes about two hundred of those will come back. The December estimate assumes about three quarters of them will come back, or about three hundred. And the pre-COVID estimate assumes they'll all come back and another hundred more, which is what he would have said would have happened. If, if, if we hadn't had all this going on. So it's sort of the demographic driven estimate. So that's the difference in those numbers. The, and I think I talked about this at the last meeting. This, you'll notice that under the no cola. Well, it doesn't matter. This is just the revenue side. So the revenue was the same in both sets of columns. It's only the cost that difference in the other, in the two sets. In the, in the revenue side, if you have, on the official enrollment estimate, ninety-five point six million, which is down from ninety-eight million, which was budgeted last year or this year. So, and we talked about the reason for that at the last meeting was that, yes, enrollment's down. And this year we were protected because we always get to use the highest of the last two years. So part, a big part of it is just the enrollment being down. And then secondly, the growth in the state school fund is only about one percent in the first year. Which isn't enough, isn't, isn't enough to make up for much. So it's actually drops. If, if we get the, another hundred kids, it'll be about ninety-six point seven million. And if we get that full pre-COVID estimate, it'd be ninety-eight point seven. Okay. The rest of these numbers on the beginning balance and the other revenues are the same under all those scenarios. So you also see that same set of numbers under the two percent cola because it's, that's the revenue side. On the spending side, with, with no cola, the salaries and benefits would be ninety-three point six million, which then runs all the way across that first set of columns. And with the two percent cola, it costs about one point four million, it goes up to ninety-five. So then when you combine all that together and you look at the bottom line there, you have a shortfall anywhere from a little over half a million up to five million. So you can see how much of a range you have there. The, the other assumption I think to point out is, I should have said this earlier, is this is assuming the contingency is stays the same as was budgeted last time, eight million dollars. So I'm not drawing on the budgeted contingency from last time. I'm trying to keep it the same. So I, I went through that pretty fast. I don't know if there's any questions about it. And we're gonna have to decide in the, in when we do the recommended budget, which one of these revenue estimates we want to assume. And that'll be a good conversation. So the other thing that this points out is we do, of course, and you've heard about this, we have some other new resources that are coming in. A lot of it's temporary. There's an S R two and an S R three, and I dropped one of the just noticed that it says S R two and two. It's supposed to be S R two and three. And between the two of them, that's about twenty-two million dollars. And it's spread over two, two to three years out. But, and it is temporary, but it's there. And, and then we're getting about a three and a half million dollar increase in SIA this year over, over or next year over this year. Because the corporate, the new corporate tax is producing revenue at a, you know, the economy is back up a bit. And it's producing much better revenue than it did before. So I think that's pretty much it. If, at least you'll know what to expect when you get it.
Thank you. I like the budget box. It, it's very easy to see and follow and understand what that they are. So thank you for that. It's very, very clear. Were there any questions from any of the board directors? I wasn't seeing any either on this one. No. Okay, go ahead Superintendent Goff. Yeah.
I do just want to make sure, Jim, where, did you talk about the enrollment and where the, where the downturn came?
Yeah, that's a good point.
Thank you.
So it was actually funny, almost all that four hundred was at the elementary level. The, the high schools were actually up a bit and the middle schools were down a bit and they about canceled each other out in terms of the net. And, and about forty percent of the four hundred was at kindergarten. And which actually in a lot of ways makes sense. I mean, if you were a kindergarten parent and you knew what you're coming into, you just might hold your kids back for a year. And so so to part of that leads me to believe we're gonna see those kids back. We may not know what grade they're coming into. But I think we're gonna see a lot of them back.
Yeah, I, thank you for saying that. I think it, I think some folks don't realize that we actually had an increase above what we expected in high school. And that we had a higher high school enrollment. Our middle school did dip a little, but really we saw all the numbers coming from elementary and most of those are kinder, kinder is not coming to school. So you know, next year, as we think about what does fall look like, part of the discussion for elementary schools is what does fall look like for an older kinder who didn't go to school this year? And one that did, what, what does that look like? And so they're in those conversations right now. But as far as recapturing students, I think that that's very good news.
And I think you mentioned that will come back to us later when we start getting into trying to plan for next year's enrollment. I see, I don't see any other questions or comments at this point. Just double checking. All right. So we are gonna move on to our board liaison reports. We have our, I think our committee list here has stayed the same. Not sure that anyone has really had any meetings with any of those groups. They've been pretty quiet for the most part. Were there any updates from that list at all? Anyone had? Not seen any. So, um, were there other, oh, I see Vice Chair Thompson.
No, um, the Policy Review Committee had a scheduled mishap in March. So we, this week, we're, we're hitting it again, going through. I think we're still working on Policy J students. Anyway, the section on students, we're still, we're still there. So I've got that up. And I also have the first bargaining session is tomorrow. So you know, things are starting to happen again.
Great. And thank you for representing us on both of those. They're big ones for sure. Are there other board member reports at this point? Anyone?
Yeah, I have a few things to, to bring up to share. I first want to congratulate many of our student musicians across the district. So district solo ensemble was last month and there are, we had quite a few gap students that got chosen to now represent us at, at the state. And I just, it, it's always an accomplishment every year. This year, they, these were not live performances. They had to record those performances, which is a whole different skill set and required additional technological and support and lots of retakes. And so I'm just really proud of them. I want to recognize them. I've been mentioning that Vice Chair Thompson and I and Superintendent Goff met with the intersectional youth, that group that we meet with on about a monthly basis. And they've been really helpful in in guiding us and advising us on different aspects of serving our LGBTQIA plus. Did I get it all in? Thank you, I'm trying. Students and just appreciate the time that we get to spend with them regularly. And they're, they're just always thoughtful and well spoken and give us good direction. I wanted to just give a, a report, a summary of the superintendent evaluation process that the, that the board has been undergoing. I just wanted to review that process. I know there's been interest in it from the, from the public. So the superintendent evaluation is by policy and annual undertaking. It's something that we do every year. Also by policy, the, the discussions and the conversations that we have about the superintendent's evaluation are done in executive session. This year, the board has three three things to consider when making its, its recommendation. So we have Superintendent Goff's own self-evaluation, which she's shared with us. We have a feedback survey that asks for feedback on the leadership standard set out by O D E. And that was filled out and returned to us by members of the district leadership team and also our union presidents, including the president of the Administrators Association. So we got feedback from those that work most closely with her, which we appreciate. And then there was our own feedback survey that we each did individually. And those, based on the goals that Superintendent Goff outlined earlier in the year, as well as those same leadership standards. And so all of those things, those, those three things feed into the evaluation that we then present to her as a board. I also want to say that not in recent history has a superintendent been as thoroughly evaluated as Superintendent Goff has allowed herself to be. The, prior to my, actually prior to her coming even and prior to me being on the board, there was no standardized, robust protocol for, for evaluating the superintendent. And certainly none that asked for feedback outside of the board to help guide that evaluation. So I just want the, the public to be aware of the process, to be aware that it is, that it is robust and rigorous. That it is conducted according to policy and to thank Superintendent Goff for her participation in it. The last thing that I wanted to address is, and I guess I just want to make an appeal to those of you that are listening from home today. Because you're, because you're listening and participating, you have some degree of concern and interest in the goings on of our school district. So I want to make you aware that it is an election year. School board elections happen off, they don't happen in November like regular elections. They happen in May. And this year there are three seats that are up for, for reelection. And none of the incumbents are running and that would be myself and Chair Butzner and Director Roach. These were difficult decisions for each of us to make because we enjoy and feel passionately about the work that we've been about. But we each have personal, different, but personal circumstances that have led us to, to make those decisions. So I would plead with you to, one, to vote. Generally, these, these elections don't get very good turnout. And I would just really ask that you participate and, and vote and make yourselves aware of the issues that are confronting our district moving into the future. This has been a year unlike any other. And there have been disruptions, but also opportunities created. And it's important that the board that leads us forward embraces those opportunities. Any one of us would be thrilled to talk to you about what we see, the issues, the important issues being going forward. And we would urge you to reach out to us. There are a number of candidates that have filed to run, which is very encouraging. I'm so glad that there is that level of interest and commitment to serving our staff and our students, especially here in our community. And I just wanted to bring your attention to that and just, I will say how grateful I've been for the four years that I've been able to serve on the board.
Thank you for those updates. Do we have any other board directors? Director Roach, go ahead.
Thank you, Chair Bussner. And thank you Director Ward for sharing the importance of voting. And, and you know, it certainly was a you know, it certainly was a very difficult decision for my, myself to decide not to run. And I, I wanted, one of the things I want to talk about was something that happened a while ago, which was the ribbon cutting for Meadow Ridge School. And that was actually the first time since I was appointed in December, I got to actually see some of these people in person. And, um, and I just, I, I'm, I'm kind of sad in some ways that I haven't had that face-to-face contact with all of you and excited for face-to-face meetings. The ribbon cutting, I, I can tell you just watching all, all of you who were there and, and the other staff members that sort of weighed off the shoulders to really celebrate something in a, in a year that's been really tough. And it is an incredible building. And as a former teacher, I just was full of jealousy. The moment I stepped in, I had a tour earlier this year with Principal Gill and just to go through it again, I'm just dripping with juice. And Assistant Principal Turner gave us a really, really great tour and then showed us how it's not just a place of learning, it's a place of gathering. It's a place of celebration. It's a place for our, our staff to really, really excel. And so that was, that was just fantastic. And we have the South, South Albany High School ribbon cutting happening this week. Sadly, I won't be able to be there. But it's going to be great to celebrate another building. And then the West Albany High School one is, is coming up next week. And that is, is something I'm really looking forward to celebrating these places that are, you know, really showing us that our schools are so much more than just places of, of classrooms, you know, that, that West is a great example of, of a community gathering place and that we really get to celebrate those things. I know Superintendent Goff mentioned it earlier, but I just want to say it one more time about the, the work that's gone into all of these changes that have, that have happened and the, the incredible work that our facility staff is doing, our bus drivers to prepare for all of these changes. The kitchen and custodial staff to make things and we are, it's not normal, but it's getting to a place that looks almost like normal. And you know, there's still, there's still a pandemic out there. We still have to be safe, but this is really, and please wear your masks. But this is really an incredible and exciting time and, and it feels really good to, in this tough time to really celebrate some successes. So I'm really just glad I got a chance to be a part of it.
Alright, thank you. Those ribbon cutting ceremonies are, are a very fun thing and boy, the facilities are just phenomenal. Spaces now. It's just been really exciting to see them for those of us that have been here for a while, waiting for some of these things to come to fruition and, and then seeing them and, and being able to get the kids back into those facilities too is just super exciting. So I know they're looking forward to it. Yes, Vice Chair Thompson.
I, I can't believe I left this out. How I interact with the schools in the most important way is my fourth grader. And so I got to bring, I got to be one of those parents that got to enjoy the, the so-called first day again and just fantastic. Principals and teachers and staff holding to the protocols. Kids excited, haven't seen parents, other parents for a while and it was just great to catch up and just, just very, very positive. And we know that aides and teachers put on a lot of work, but they were raring to go and just, just an exciting time. That's more important than other stuff I do.
Any other board report moments? Not seeing any. I'm gonna turn it over to our student board members. LJ, let's start with you.
Perfect, yeah. I'll just start off with congratulating some students. I'll echo what Director Ward said with the uh, district band competition. We had many people from our band, so many, I would name them, but the list is way too long for that. Because there were so many that did such a great job. So congratulations to those students. Um, we had several art students attend the virtual Willamette Valley Scholastic Art Ceremony last week. And many of them were awarded gold and silver keys for their work. So congratulations to all students from that. Um, as talked about, the ribbon cutting ceremony for our new building is next week. We're definitely making an event about it. I know our jazz band is coming to play. Do a little bit of that. I remember a couple of years ago, I don't really know what you call it, but when they first started building, like I'll call it the kickoff. Our band came and played for that. And so it's super cool to be like, we played at the beginning and now we get to play at the end. It's uplifting for us seniors who weren't really sure if it would be done by the time we graduated or COVID and everything, the crazier, but to be able to come back to a new building. I've had the opportunity to see it a couple of times and it's super cool. As you guys know, we have freshman days coming up next Thursday and Friday. We've already started working on that as student government and leadership and making that a super awesome and welcoming experience for the freshmen. We're giving some tours and our band's gonna play and some cheerleaders will be there at the beginning of the day. So just give the freshmen a real good welcome to high school and we're super excited. All the buzz about coming back to school. I know there's been lots of questions from students, so we've been pushing the student forum a lot. So we're expecting a very good show out for that from West Albany students, but that's all I have for you guys today. Thank you.
Thank you. And Esperanza, you're up.
I feel like LJ is just always taking my shine nowadays. Wow. Okay, well, I get to one-up him today, so that's whatever. Okay, so one thing to begin with. Ninth graders will be on campus April fifteenth and sixteenth. All students will arrive on campus in person on April nineteenth, at least the ones that aren't doing CDL. There are about nine hundred and thirty-five students returning in person. That's crazy to think about, like all those students on campus and it's amazing to have that finally back, but we'll see how it goes and hopefully everything goes well. And I'm very excited to have that stuck moving forward. Something that I heard about today was our staff arrived on campus today to help beginning preparing their classrooms for their students return. And their energy was awesome and they loved reuniting with one another. In the next few days, there will be more specific information sent out to students and family on the return dates and process. And Mr. Hunter apparently is working on a cool video, which is kind of, you know, we'll see how that goes. And I, LJ kind of, I think he talked a little bit about this, but I don't think, I don't know if it's the same or thing, but South Albany's Ascend won the large ensemble category at the Oregon Music Educator Solo and Ensemble Virtual Event for the recording of A Prayer for Peace by Michael John Trotta. Abigail DeYoung won the soprano category at the same event for her performance of See Two Vooks. I can't see that, by Jules Masette. Abigail was also notified just like last week that she will be competing in the Nationals Association of Teachers of Singing Competition after winning the Northwest Regional Competition in both the high school and classical and high school musical theater categories. Ascend will be submitting a video for the OSAA State Chamber Ensemble Championships and Abigail will be doing the same for the OSAA State Solo and Ensemble Competition. And the thing that I get to one-up West with, alright? Very excited because Mr. Johnson for receiving his first diamond in coaching for the National Speech and Debate Association. This is a national honor granted by the association and recognizing coaches who have received fifteen thousand coaching points, which is actually a hundred and fifty thousand points earned by us students in speech and debate during competitions. And who, and who have shown excellence in the field of speech and debate. Brandon serves on the Southern Oregon and SDA District Executive Board and is our speech and debate chair and is widely recognized for his expertise by speech and debate coaches throughout the state. I believe Johnson is the first coach at South Albany to earn this distinction and the first coach ever because, at least in the Albany district, because so far this has not been received by any of the West Albany coaches.
There's always gotta be a little bit of good rivalry, right? That's great. It's exciting updates and everyone's, it sounds like they're doing really well across the board. And I believe we have a West Albany, South Albany football game this Friday. So that's nice to see that. Been getting all those sporting events in and we are back to it. And I think that is the last game for both schools. So it was a little bit of a short season, but I know they've enjoyed having it. So be a good evening for Friday night. Alright, any? Any last minute board updates?
I do have a question.
Oh, yes, go ahead, Esperanza.
For the ribbon cuttings, um, is that going to be like a very large event? I wasn't completely sure because I don't know if I should, you know, prepare myself if, to go or not, if it's going to be a huge amount.
So there is a maximum capacity for the ribbon cuttings of a hundred, a hundred and fifty, a hundred and fifty, I believe, um, outside. Thank you, a hundred and fifty. So that's the outside ribbon cutting part, Esperanza, and it's the same for both schools, LJ. Um, and so, and all those folks will be physically distanced and masked. And so there will be a few little speeches by people and then these great big scissors come out and cut the ribbon. And then people will go in, if they want to go in, they can tour in person in small groups or they can just tour online because we're actually having virtual tours as well. And so when you walk through a facilitated tour, you'll be with a small group that'll be physically distanced.
And so how are the hundred and fifty folks being designated? Is that happening with the schools or?
Yes. So some are district, uh, district invites, some are, are David McKay invites, right? All of our partners who've been involved in the construction build from the architects to the construction companies, et cetera. And then the largest number is for folks that the school is inviting themselves. And both ceremonies will be livestreamed on YouTube. I think it, I think we got a little note from communications, which is the same place, if folks are watching the meeting right now, they're going to be able to stream at this exact same place for each of those events.
So live attendance at this point has just been invitation.
It's invitation only for live attendance, exactly. And so if you have not received an invitation, that doesn't mean you won't receive one yet because I know some people are still working on their lists. But I know that the district invites have all been sent out and we're keeping it fairly small on our side to the board and cabinet and just key folks within the system and partners.
Great. Thank you. Alright, I think that is moving us into our consent agenda, which, oh, I apologize. We had no, I'm just verifying, no committee or community or school presentations for this evening, correct? Okay, so that does bring us to consent agenda and we only have the personnel information on the consent agenda for tonight. So the board members should have had an opportunity to look at that. Were there, if any questions or comments for that? I'm seeing nothing. So our consent agenda will pass with unanimous consent. And that brings us to our old business, which is the school calendar. And I believe that's Director Larry, yes?
I believe that it is. Chair Butzner and members of the board. What I'd like to do this evening is, as quickly and painlessly as I can, is give you an overview with some calendar basics, some things that, to understand about calendars, a little bit of history. A few examples of, of potential calendars and then I may throw an opinion in there towards the end and, and turn that over to Superintendent Goff for perhaps some desired direction. Traditionally, Albany School District calendars have been pretty much mostly the same. The basics of the calendars that we have used over the years, and there have been some changes, but the basics are that we typically look at the calendar in terms of what, looking at a certified licensed staff calendar and that kind of outlines the one hundred and ninety-one day calendar. And so if you open in Board Book Calendar, the calendar that's labeled Calendar A, this is the status quo calendar that I brought to the board at a previous board meeting. And this is pretty much the way the calendar has been for the last number of years. Hundred and ninety-one days, this includes school days, conference days, teacher workdays, staff development days, grading days, holidays, and also non-contract days. Those are, you know, days like the day after Thanksgiving and the days during winter break and the days during spring break, et cetera. There's typically been a day about midway through each semester for staff development and also preparation either for grades in some years or for fall conferences. So those days are typically located somewhere in either late October, early November. Fall conferences are usually located about nine weeks after the start of school. There's, there has been some push and pull over the years with elementary schools with liking to do calendars a little later and secondary schools wanting them to, to do them a little bit earlier. And that's typically due to the semester rewarding of transcripted grades at the secondary level. Recently, winter break has been allocated at least two weeks. That hasn't always been the case, but in recent years, one of the things that has happened with calendars is there has been some surveying done over the years, surveying of parents, staff, et cetera. And the two-week winter break has become quite popular. And so it has become kind of a staple of our traditional calendars. In January, Martin Luther King Day is not a contracted holiday for our employees. It's a non-contract day. However, that day is legally not available to hold school, can't be designated as a makeup day, et cetera. President's Day in February is a non-contract day also, but it is designated as a potential inclement weather or pandemic or whatever, whatever you have these days, makeup day. We used to talk about it exclusively with inclement weather. Typically, spring break has been assigned, aligned with the local college schedules. For us, that's typically LBCC and OSU. There used to be an Oregon University System calendar, but each university sets their own now, but we do try to align spring break with the local college breaks. And then at the end of the school year, there's usually, well, there is contractually a half day of school, usually scheduled on a Wednesday or Thursday, the last workday for teachers, then is the following day. So this, those are the basics of what you see in Calendar A as a status quo calendar. About five years ago, and I would say if I had, if I was going to estimate about five years before that, the Calendar Committee did a bit of survey. Five years ago, I think, again, I think it was five. This was in response to the superintendent at the time being very interested in making some changes to the calendar, much like what have been discussed more recently. And so the Calendar Committee met multiple times, did a bit of surveying, surveyed. Back in those days, we were using a, a tool called Survey Monkey, not like we do today with Google Forms, but we surveyed students, we surveyed staff, we surveyed parents, asking them about different options with the calendar. In the end, various calendars were looked at. There were actually quite a number of them that, that were examined by the group. And as you know, there was a little bit of change and turmoil in the school district and at that point, the board essentially adopted status quo calendars and that's kind of where we've been since then. Also, one of the difficulties that the Calendar Committee ran across in those days was a lack of consensus for change. There, there really was no clear path to a, a preferred change in the schedule. Um, there, there really was no clear path, uh, to, um, a, a preferred change in the schedule at that time. Um, what I've learned about calendars over the years is, um, and I've often talked to the board about this, is that, um. There are always trade-offs, um, you know, different stakeholders want different things and typically, um, we can't provide all of those. There are always trade-offs for one thing versus another, changes to the, also, changes to the calendar. Tend to be somewhat emotional, uh, believe it or not, uh, certainly emotion eliciting. Um, and, uh, they have wide-ranging impacts, there are a lot of people who are impacted one way or another when we make significant changes to the calendar. It seems that for every reason to do one thing, um, an, a, a, an opposing reason, uh, props up not to do that thing. Um, some of the major issues that have been discussed in the past. Were that running into summer by starter, starting early and running late. May cause students and staff in non-air-conditioned buildings to be very hot. Um, some of our buildings, many of our buildings or most are not air-conditioned. Starting before Labor Day, um, interferes with some events and activities. Um, the State Fair was one that was always discussed by, um, uh, Director Ricker when he was on the board. Um, having the week off at Thanksgiving, if possible, uh. Or at least the day off before Thanksgiving has been a very popular, uh, change when we've been able to make that. People have very much enjoyed that. Um, the longer winter break is, is popular. A longer spring break has been discussed, uh, but I would say there has been, uh, we, we looked at that five years ago. Um, but did not really develop any consensus. Um, typically what you, what we found was people loved the idea of a two-week spring break, but they didn't want to go any later in June. Uh, and again, you know, you can't, you can't have your cake and eat it too, um, in, in those regards. There are also, uh, conflicts later in, the later in June school goes, um. But most of those conflicts are navigable if given enough lead time. You know, we're talking about things like, um, uh, band camp and other camps, uh, family weddings, um, the college summer terms starting up. Uh, travel, um, and again, um, you know, the issue of heat, but most of those are navigable, um. Uh, you know, you can, you can work with those if given enough time. So. Please ask questions because I'm just going to power through this, uh, in the absence. Um, but, uh, we provided a, a few examples of calendars for you and I would like to turn your attention now. Um, to, uh, Calendar B. And Calendar B, uh, came out of the discussion, um, with our DLT team about providing an alternative. That moved a little, uh, moved the start of school up a bit and the end of school back a bit. And provided more breaks in the meantime. And so if you take a look here at Calendar B, you will see that we have placed the start of school on this example before Labor Day. Um, it just so happens that in twenty twenty-one, Labor Day occurs fairly late in September. And so starting the week prior, um, only has us starting on the thirty-first of August, which is. To be honest with you, only two days earlier than we have started on the calendar in other years. So while starting before Labor Day will, you know, certainly, um, raise, uh, attention in some, uh, quarters. It's really not that early on the twenty twenty-one calendar. And then as you, as you, uh, look through this calendar, you can see that, uh, we have placed no school during the week of Thanksgiving. Um, we have, uh, two weeks at, uh, winter break. We have two weeks at spring break. And we have the school year ending on the twenty-second of June, which is about a week, uh, later than what we traditionally have been, um, starting. So. That's an alternative calendar, it's not a huge change, um, but it, but it, but there is obviously some change in there. The other calendar. That I want to draw your attention to is the one that, um, ODE sent out to us. And this calendar is. Labeled. Oops, I think it's labeled. Calendar ODE. And this, this calendar is a little difficult to, to see. But, um, basically what ODE has recommended in considering a calendar like this is to identify. A few weeks during the school year, um, that would be a break. And would only be used if there were a closure. Um, and specifically in this case, they're thinking about a pandemic. And so on, if you, if you can see this example in here, what they've said is that. School would start in August and it would kind of go through to winter break with the, I think those are pink lines in November and December. And then the green in early January would be a time when there was not school. Unless the time back in the yellow or somewhere in, before that date had been missed due to. You know, in this case pandemic, but we can think in terms of, um, inclement weather, um, and some other things like that. So the ODE calendar is kind of theoretical and, um, Superintendent Goff, uh, asked me if I would take the idea. And put the idea into, um, our, our dates, our calendar, and so I'm going to project my screen here. And I'm going to show you what, what a calendar similar, not identical, but similar to this, um, might look like, if I can find it here. This is what I want to do. Can you see this, uh, calendar that says page one right in the middle? Okay, good. So. Um, uh, I, I have enlarged this calendar so that you can see it a little bit, but obviously in the upper left starts with the month of August, September, October, November, et cetera. Okay, across the top. And you can see that in this calendar example, we moved the start date up a bit, but not nearly as far as the ODE example, which had it. Uh, starting right at the beginning of August, which, uh, you know, again, I'm, uh, my bias in this is that I'm not sure that that's realistic, given our, um, ability to cool buildings. And then, um, you can see that there is a week off at Thanksgiving, two weeks at winter break, and then a, a, a red week at the end of winter break. And this red week would be a break. Unless. There had been a closure. In which case, school would be held. And then if you go down here to spring break, you'll see that the second week of spring break is equally, uh, red. And would be a week for makeup if time prior to that was missed. And this calendar has the school year ending still on the twenty-second of June, same as that last calendar example. With the idea being that these red weeks are actually part of a break. Unless they are needed for makeup. And that's what the ODE example, at least in theory, uh, was trying to show. Um, the only other thing that I would comment about this particular calendar is. That I might take, if you're gonna do something like this, I might take that first red week and move it to the last week of school in June. Only because, um. You know, uh, what we have found certainly with inclement weather is the beginning of January is just too early. Um, a lot of things happen in the months of January, February, March, and so. Um, the idea isn't where these are placed as much as the idea that there is a, of, um, a makeup, uh, week scheduled. Okay, so, all of that said. Um, we are recommending that the board adopt a calendar for next year fairly soon. Um, and, uh. My opinion, I told you I would give you an opinion, is that, uh, calendars are, uh, are things that impact people very broadly. They, when you make changes to the calendar, um, it impacts a lot of people in ways that we might not initially recognize. And my recommendation is that the board adopt a somewhat status quo calendar for twenty-two, excuse me, twenty-one, twenty-two. And if there is an interest in moving towards a more, um. Year-round or extended model, that they engage with the public and the stakeholders involved in that and make a. Uh, well-thought-out, uh, decision, um, after gathering input, um, as opposed to making a decision. Um, on, on such a short timeframe, but again, I will tell you that that is my opinion. Um, Su- Superintendent Goff, anything?
Um, no, thank you so much for sharing that, I think you could stop maybe sharing your screen.
Will do. I, I hope, I hope I can do that.
Good job, Director Larry, thank you so much for walking us through each of those, that was, that was super helpful. So yeah, so I'm really interested in hearing from the board what your thoughts are, um, where you're, where you're leaning. Part of what we've talked about before is how do we shorten the summer? Um, I know there's interest in that among board members, so I'm interested in hearing your thoughts.
Um, I'll start, uh, with, I would tend to agree with the recommendation from Director Larry, just in that. Um. I personally would not want to make any decisions for change like that. Um, without. Looking at all the stakeholders and, um, inquiring and getting some additional information from them. I also think we've had a lot of change happening already, that, um. We can, there's a lot of information that comes out of a year of learning what a pandemic has done. Um, and how we would potentially maybe need to have some makeup weeks. Um. I tend to agree what, what I hear from folks is extending a spring break. To then turn around and stay in school longer at the end of the year is not necessarily been, um. The most popular of decisions per se, and so, um, I'm not sure that that would be. Uh, a great benefit, I, I know there has been some interest in shortening the summers. Um, I, I personally think it would be, if you're gonna look at something like that, there's a lot of, um, districts around the nation who've done year-round schooling and then just have breaks. You know, throughout, and I think we would be better suited to look even at something like that, not that that's my preference. Um, but, uh, I, I, I think. We have a need to decide on a schedule sooner rather than later for next year. And I think with everything else we have going on, um, it's in our best interest to really take some time. To look into what those different options might look like, that's, that's kind of where I would land as well. So, um. Director Ward, did you have a? Hand up there?
I did, yes, thank you.
Yes.
Um, so, so I'm conflicted, I have, um. I have long advocated for taking action to bridge the summer gap. That, um, that impacts so many of our children during the summertime, during that time when they are. Not really engaged in anything instructive, constructive and. Um. And what that means is then when they return to us in September, is that we, we spend. An enormous amount of those first, that first month, just bringing everybody back up to speed, we're not even covering new material. And I think that by, you know. If we can find a way to bridge that summer gap, we not only, um, we not only help our children. But we make better use of that time that we have them because we're not spending so much time just. Reviewing and getting everybody back, everybody back up to speed. Um, I'm. I'm a little frustrated because, um, it is, it is true, what Director Larry says, that, that these, that calendars have big impacts. And that the, the best way to go about it would be for the, the board to, um. To interact with the, with the public and to, to get feedback, um, to guide that decision. However, uh, that's a process that would have needed to start six months ago. We are in the middle of, of a pandemic, um, and I find, I mean, it's true that we've had a lot of change, but I also feel like. This. Uh, coming out of this pandemic lends itself then to, we, we've been doing school a different way for a whole year and a half now. And so if there is ever a time where, um. Where we could shake loose of traditions that are not necessarily. Helping our students or useful anymore because we're not using them in the fields, it's, now is the time to do it. Um. So, I have that frustration. I, I do recognize that making the decision like now in April to begin school earlier in August, like. There, there were already plans in place for, for people in August. Um, so I get that. Um, I do know that other districts do, um. I, I guess I can't say in Oregon, but in the world, um, do plan that extra week at the end of school. For, um, for inclement weather or now pandemic or norovirus or whatever. Um, and it seems like that might be an option that we have to, um. Put, add on a week to twenty twenty twenty, twenty twenty-two. Um. That, that we could go and then if we didn't need to, to use it, then we would just finish at our, at our regular time. My initial thoughts and responses.
Thank you, uh, Director Roach, head you up next.
Thank you, um, first off, I, I like the, the thinking of the, those flexibility options and adding that padding in there, um. Uh, as Director Larry knows, I, I was hired several years ago to do a project for the district to put. Um, create some, uh, summer opportunities for our Title One students. And, um, created opportunities for about two hundred and fifty of, um, our, some of our lowest academically performing students in the district. And, um, alongside that, I was doing research on what, what we tend to call the summer slide, right? And that's that lost, um, academic achievement levels, um, that kids. See over the summer and it happens to all kids, but it predominantly happens to, um, kids in lower socioeconomic status. And, um. And what I found was that there was typically about a fifteen percent, uh, learning loss over the summer. And I know as being a teacher, that I would spend weeks. Doing, teaching as a fourth, fifth grade teacher, teaching fourth grade material to get them ready. To start the learning of the standards that I was designated to teach. I have seen, um, districts do. Year-round schedule, I haven't seen it, but I've seen what some schedules look like with mixed in, um, breaks throughout. Um. We have heard, I, I, I think, I don't know if I can speak for all the board, but we have heard from our community. Over and over and over again about getting kids into their seats to learn. And we have heard so much feedback about that and the thought of. Sending our kids back home in, in ten weeks. Drives me nuts. The fact that we're finally getting them into their classrooms and then we're going to send them home for three months. To, we don't know what, right? I am a huge proponent of year-round school and I think, you know, our, our parents who have been clamoring for us to. To get kids back into school, um, you know, there, the gains that can be brought around with that and the flexibility that it can create. Rather than just forcing people to take vacations during this set time. It can create a lot more flexibility and so I'm a, I've, I'm worried that our calendar options don't go far enough. And right now is where we have people who are pushing for a change. What, this is the perfect time to do it and I understand that we don't have much time before school ends and before next year starts. But this is the time to make a difference, this is the time to do it and I would really be, really be sad if we miss this opportunity. If this boat passed us by, uh, to create change and just go with the status quo, that really doesn't work. For all of our kids and families. So I just, I really urge us to be more creative and think outside the box.
Thank you, um, Director Aganaga.
Thank you, Madam Chair, uh, I completely agree with, uh, Director Ward and Director Roach, I, I would reject both of these calendars. Um, this is a can we've kicked down the road for two years. Um, and I understand there has been circumstances that, you know, not only our district, but all districts have never faced before. Um. We, we need, uh, we've all seen the Washington or to Oregon comparison, we all know that quote. Um, especially when you look at the younger grades at Timber, you know, they're losing twenty minutes a day, uh, and. And those younger grades because of the transportation and. It's, it's a need and. I think now would be a good time because of restrictions that we have, um, you know, a lot smaller weddings going on, a lot less vacations. Um, and so now, if, if I'm. And so now, if, I'm so sorry, Mr. Larry, but I, I would love to see a more. You know, add another thirty days into our academic year. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Director Thompson?
Yeah. I, in big picture, I agree, we need to start moving towards the idea of. A lesser break, a, a, an almost three month break in, in the summer and. I think on further down the agenda, we're gonna talk about opportunities that we're gonna have. To do different things in the summer and. Educationally related. This year. So I think summer's gonna look different, but it's April of twenty twenty-one and. The idea of doing, and I, when we got this packet and that, that OD sample. Kind of theoretical calendar that has built in breaks, I thought, that was great, but. And, and something we can look forward to in the future, but I'm not ready to tell everybody, hey, guess what? We're doing a radical change. I like. My. Feeling was calendar B begins that change before Labor Day. Later in June, it, it's, it's kind of sends the message that it's coming. Things are gonna be different. But this particular summer isn't going to be radically. Different. Though, having said that, there's gonna be opportunity, it sounds like for academic. Actions happening in the summer, and I think that's great too. So my, my feeling is for calendar B.
I wanted really quickly hear from our two student board members if they have any. Thoughts or input. LJ, go ahead.
Um, I don't have a, a lot, but from. A student standpoint, I would like to agree with the fact that three months is a very long time in between. Like ending and starting where a lot of information can be forgotten and like a startup would be needed at the beginning of the year. But I'm, as a student, summer is what we look forward to every year. So I'm not thinking like shorten that, but more like. I don't know how we would, but like maybe some events here and there, just like keep. The information fresh in our minds or something. We would have to get way creative because no kid wants to do school during summer, but. That's just what I would think from a student standpoint.
Thank you. Esperanza.
Kind of basing what LJ said is like for a lot of us, summer is that safe place that we have right after school, after all the mental. Stuff that we're going through with school and like, I feel like if we. I think if you do it the right way, we could slip in a couple extra weeks in there without kids feeling really overwhelmed. Because that's what I'm mostly worried about is adding those extra days, adding that like constant being in school more. It's just gonna put more mental stress on them because. Whether it's like, oh, we get to go more in depth into our classes, which would be amazing to have that extra help. But I think it's more of just being in school that stresses a lot of us out. So even if it does make some classes easier, I still, I still don't believe that some students will see it that way, I guess. And like for me personally, in my situation, I make all my money during the summer. And that's what I like kind of live off during the school year. So like. If those three months were gone, then I'd have to figure out a different situation. And I don't know how easy that would be. Like I go to Washington in July and. I go somewhere in August, I go to Tennessee and do some stuff over there with my mom. And that's the only time that I see her is like a week once a year. So it's just circumstances that I don't know if. Students or parents are gonna be happy to give up really quickly. So you're really gonna have to communicate with them. Like, and I know seasonal farming is very popular during the summer. And lower income families that I know and people my age. Do that farming in the summer. So it's another source of income for them. Thinking of at least the Hispanic community that I'm a part of. And like, like I said, I feel like it's gonna cause more stress on the students, but I feel like if you guys did it the right way. You could slip in a couple extra weeks and not have that huge gap of three months. But yeah, that's what I believe. So I do think that as soon as we come back, my mind's gone, but. Three, personally, I love that first two weeks where I just get to like. Not stress about school as soon as we come in. It's like getting to know our teachers and getting to know our classmates. But I do see how that could not benefit, benefit us educationally.
Thank you for that. I, I. I tend to agree, and I think it's one of those things where there's, there's some opportunity here. To definitely have a really good. Thoughtful calendar where we lessen the, the summer break time, but we also look at when do we offer those breaks throughout. And give people some opportunity for planning. I do think there's some community groups and, and folks that if we hear from. May impact us as well. And you're also gonna have the levels of school will be a, a big difference as well. You're gonna have your high school students, like you said, at a working age. Things like that that are very impactful for them might be very different from your elementary school. Type situation as well. And so, you know. Maybe there needs to be some, some thought to differing those calendars too. And it's not necessarily the same for every. Level of education either. I just think that there is an opportunity here to. Really do something good as a whole. I'm not sure we're at a place where that's time. Conducive unfortunately, but that's, I'm not sure. Director Ward, I see you had your hand up again.
I did. Director Larry wanted to say something though, so go ahead, Randy.
The only thing, the only thing I just wanted to be sure that everybody's really clear that we're locked into a one hundred and ninety-one day calendar. You know, looking at those teacher workdays. And so we're, we're talking, if we're talking about shortening summer, the vehicle available to the board is to spread the year out. So there wouldn't be any more workdays for teachers or school days for kids.
Right. Thank you for that.
Because that's a part of the collective bargaining.
Bargaining, right, right. You know, and, and, and talking about this, I think my experience has been that my concern is greatest for middle school age children. I feel like for many elementary school aged children, certainly not all, there are summer camp and. Opportunities. Our high schoolers, especially sixteen and up, have the opportunity to, to work. But for middle school, there aren't as many camp opportunities and they're not as cool or as appealing to middle schoolers and they can't get a job. So, I mean, it has been a challenge in my household to find. Constructive things for twelve, thirteen and fourteen year olds to do for, what, ten weeks during the summer. You know, one thing that we, and, and Vice Chair Thompson brought this up and we're going to discuss it later. But the other thing that we can do in addition to, to address the summer slide, in addition to. Adjusting the school year is to offer quality content during the summer. And that is something that we can and should do this summer. And there are obviously costs associated with that. But I mean, we, we have children that are gonna, more than ever, that are gonna need to get caught up from this year. And I would say that there is a difference between enrichment activities over the summer and educational activities over the summer. We need educational activities. And what I would love to see is. Maybe an, an eight week. Six day, I don't know what it would take, a six to eight week offering that could be remedial. Voluntary, okay, could be remedial for, for children at any age to, to come in and get caught up. But could also give opportunities to, I say, especially middle schoolers in high school to take that extra class or to get ahead. They could, you know, complete a semester's worth of one class in, in eight weeks, if that's all that they were, that they were studying. So maybe that is, maybe that is what we look at in the, in the shortened, the immediate term.
Director Roach, go ahead.
Um, well, I'm glad Director Ward that you added that. I, I think, you know, our, our partners, Boys and Girls Club, YMCA. Albany Parks and Rec offer incredible opportunities. But they're not the same as being in a classroom with like, with a licensed teacher. We need to make that really clear, right? That, that, that. We don't see the same, we're not gonna see the same gain that kids get if, if they're spending the summer. At, at those great opportunities with Boys and Girls Club and things like that, as they would as in the classroom with a licensed teacher. So that's something, I, I, I guess I'm looking at, you know, the fact that it is April and we have a couple of weeks until our next meeting. Is it, can I propose that we put a group together with Director Larry to. May perhaps explore what some other districts around the country have done. To, to expand their calendar, to offer those opportunities, to look at. Alternate flexibility for working high schoolers. For, you know, those different things. Is it, is it possible that we could put together a little task force to get together a couple of times and do some research? And come back to the next board meeting with some options?
So this, this has come back already, I believe, twice. As far as it's, it's old business yet again. I am not gonna say we can't, but. I think we're getting real short on planning time for anybody to be able to do anything based on. Whether we go with the status quo or we don't, the more we extend it out, but I'd like to hear from. Superintendent Goff, you had your hand raised also, so maybe you can speak to both your comments you had plus that.
Thank you. Yes, I think part of what we're suffering from here is the timing, right? So we have so little time before summer actually begins and. The challenge with that then is changing a, changing a calendar and really having the community engagement that we want to have around this. I absolutely agree and I'm excited to hear this strong community voice around. Let's get kids in school. Let's maximize learning time. I am really excited to have. Those voices join in this conversation around then what can a calendar look like? If, if we really value kids being in school, then what can the year long calendar look like? My concern is the time to have those conversations and also to talk to impacted groups such as the groups that Esperanza was bringing up. The timeline that we have does not afford us the opportunity to do that in a meaningful way. That said. What I am proposing is two things. One is that a group begin today and work through December of next year. To identify. What we want next as a school district for our kids with what learning looks like. Time of day, time of year, et cetera, and have the board vote on that in January of twenty twenty-two so that we can make. A well-informed, community-based decision. I also think however, that we have to address, we know that we need more time with kids right now and. And we also know that all kids aren't gonna be able to take advantage of that. And again, our student board members give us great examples for us to, to think about there. We have already spoken, and this is part of the summer school. I get, I should have just gone into that in my superintendent's report because I think it would have helped this conversation a bit. But we have already. Talked to all of our schools about the summer programming that they want to offer where they are targeting students who. Need those additional supports in order to bridge into their next year. And so we've already made it clear that through the summer support funds that we're getting through the CARES Act, that we would be giving those. Resources to the schools to be able to do those programs. In addition to that, we have the summer programming that. That we are planning not only internally, but with our external partners. And it's not only Boys and Girls Club and the YMCA. Who are critical community partners for us to be able to get work off the ground at this scale. And at the caliber that we want, right? So we know two things. We know kids need to move their bodies in the summer and they need to use their brains in the summer. And so the partnerships with those two organizations and with CAP as well are really key in getting the body movement opportunities for kids. But we also know that we need our own teachers, certified teachers and education assistants. To be working with those students during July to bridge them into next year. So what we're really focusing on with the summer program is the month of July as a district partnership. The schools where we've asked them to focus, they can, they can still focus on July, but really also to look at June. And August for their school-based programming. And the district programming will be focused on July and partners with a number of community partners such as LBCC in the city of Albany, including the, the library. For a lot of diverse options that I heard you, Director, were talking about middle schoolers and what our middle school kids need. And they need to think that it's worthwhile for one thing, right? And so really working with partners such as the REN, our REN partnership. And finding opportunities for interesting, unique academic classes. That also engage kids at, at a high interest level. So. So all of that work is part of what is being done through this summer work and it is not the same as year round school. It's not. Every kid won't be there for one thing, right? Every, every kid won't attend. But in order for us to build a strong year round school calendar, we need to be talking to our different segments of our community to find out. When would it be more beneficial for us to have some more gaps and how would it negatively impact you if we really shortened the gaps during summer? I think that the question about the, the agricultural seasons is a really important question for our community to, to think about, right? So, so I would actually recommend that the board adopt a calendar option tonight. Recognizing that it is not the ideal option. I am happy to have the board also direct us as staff to engage in that very discussion. Director Roach, that, that you are requesting, which is let's start looking at these other calendar years and. And simultaneously, we're, we need to, to get the summer up and running. So ironically. I'm so far past school starting and so far in forward on summer. That it blows my mind that our kids all still aren't back in school yet because. You know, that I, once you make one thing, one decision, you're moving on to the next segment of time. So. I know this is an issue and I wish we had more time to address the calendar in the way that I know that you, you. Would really like to see that done.
Esperanza, you had another comment you wanted to make.
Oh, I was just gonna say that I'm actually a part of this cool thing that I don't know how long it's been set up. It's called Cactus of Oregon Student Board Representatives, which is a bunch of people in Oregon that are student representatives. Are coming together and like talking about different things that are going on within our school boards. Don't know if LJ got the same email as me. I think, yeah, he did. Our next meeting is on Thursday, so I was just wondering if maybe it's something I could bring up and see their opinions on it.
For sure. I definitely think that would be a great idea. See what other, other school boards are, are doing and what discussions are being had. What other students think, yeah. Director Aganaga.
So with the, with the timeline the superintendent talked about, how does that affect us with bargaining? I, I heard Mr. Mr. Larry talk about, we have a hundred and ninety-one days, but. How does that affect? You know, say if we approved a new calendar in January. Do we have to wait for another bargaining? You know, is it gonna be twenty twenty-five?
Yeah, so if, if the, if part of the new calendar is to actually add learning days. So a year round calendar doesn't necessarily add any learning days. It just shortens. The gap, the time periods in between the learning chunks of time. So you still have the same number of learning days, but there are fewer. Shorter breaks. So your summer isn't two months long, three months long. But what I hear you advocating for Director Aganaga is actually also adding days. And so. We consider a couple of things. The first thing is we have that conversation while we're in the discussion through December about. while we're in the discussion through December about the cost of each day, right? How much does each day cost? And Jim, I don't know if you have that at your fingertips or not, in your, in your head.
I forgot. I used to actually know. It was, it's pretty crazy. It's, it's a lot of money.
It's a lot of money per day, yeah.
You might have figured it out, but I can't remember.
When you think in terms of, you know, the collective bargaining discussions, each day is worth about a half a percent of base salary.
Okay. Um, thank you. And what, um, I'm sorry, I, my phone just set an alarm off to tell me to go to bed, honestly. Uh, uh, so yes, so the collective bargaining discussions, that was the other piece. Thank you, Director Larry. So then the next step is, we, we get into conversation with our, with our union partners around um, negotiating the agreement. But it's not something that we would wait to have the discussion with them until January. If we start hearing within that group that, okay, part of what we're, we're gonna end up with is a proposal to add days, we are immediately then in conversation with our union presidents around, around, is there a potential to add days? How could we make that happen within the contract so that it's not something we would need to kick down the road forever? That would be our approach.
Thank you, ma'am. And I think also, you know, it, it has ability, I would be concerned about a lot of classified staff, because a lot of classified staff have that summer job they do. But they also, you know, a lot of them, um, I think that extra income and the reliability of knowing your calendar out would also be a benefit. So, I, I really think, um, you guys are on point with kind of surveying and talking to the staff. And that is a very important thing to do.
I appreciate your point about transportation. It actually is one of the, um, we're, we're kind of doing a case study this summer. So one of the things we're gonna be offering with this Think Big for Summer programming is that we are going to be moving students around, which we haven't done before. So, um, uh, kids will, our, our transportation system, I think, will probably run similar to a city bus line, right? Where, where there's a new bus coming along every fifteen minutes. Um, so, uh, we'll figure out that whatever pattern works. But we need drivers to do that, and typically they haven't been assigned jobs that last all day during the summer. So, we are looking at, do, are, do we have enough drivers who are interested in doing that work during the summer? And um, so it's kind of a test case.
We, we did that for our, the, the summer program, hired a number of bus drivers. And i- it was, it was great. And a, a lot of them really liked having that summer opportunity.
All right, so, we need to either decide if we're going to hear a motion and adopt a calendar this evening. And we're hearing recommendations from the district being to adopt a status quo calendar, but to continue on with a uh, work group of people that we can get together, starting now um, through the December timeframe and really try to get some plans knocked out for uh, the next go-around, which would involve some of our community partners, families. Um, quite a bit more gathering of information and then potential um, contract needs and all of that. So, that's what we're hearing as a recommendation from the district staff. Um, we have two calendars uh, available to us. We also had a request to possibly push this out another um, to the next board meeting, so maybe we can have some additional discussion, which we can also entertain that. Um, but it sounds like that also might be a little problematic for, from the district staff perspective, so. Uh, Vice Chair Thompson, go ahead.
Well, with all that said, I would simply move to adopt uh, Calendar B as presented tonight. Sim- simply put.
So I'm pulling up Calendar B again, um, so that board members have that in front of you. That one has us actually making a change to starting the school year early and having the school year go long into June, longer into June with, um, I believe just an additional week at spring break and some additional days in November off. Okay, so we have a motion on the table uh, for adopting Calendar B as presented this evening.
Sorry, I have one question, Madam Chair.
Yes, go ahead.
I, I think it's probably just a clerical error, but on A, it's an early release on Wednesdays, and B, that's not identified.
Uh, there has been no uh, uh, discussion of changing anything about Wednesdays.
I believe the early release note is on the second, it bled over onto the second page of Calendar B.
Oh yeah, there you go.
Oh, sorry. I just printed out the first page.
Yeah, it is on the second page, it looks like, yeah. Okay. Uh, Director Roach.
No.
Director Ward.
Nay.
Vice Chair Thompson.
Uh, I.
Director Aganaga.
No.
Uh, Esperanza.
Aye.
LJ.
No.
And I vote nay as well, so uh, on the voting count, that was uh, four to one, not approving of that motion to adopt Calendar B.
Madam Chair, I moved to, to adopt Calendar A, the status quo calendar. Yes, that's, that's my motion.
I'm going to pull up Calendar A again, just so that everyone sees that. Um, so, motion on the table now is for adopting Calendar A, which is our status quo calendar, uh, as presented. Director Roach.
Nay.
Director Ward.
I vote aye with the caveats that we s- that we follow the the recommendation of staff and start looking at what a calendar would look like for the next school year. I'd also make the request that we be updated on what um, summer plans are.
Uh, Vice Chair Thompson.
Nay.
Director Aganaga.
No.
Uh, Esperanza.
Nay.
Uh, LJ.
Nay.
And I vote aye. So that has us as a, two votes in favor and three votes against. So Calendar A is not approved. So, I, I'm going to take my chair uh, hat and I am going to say, at this point, uh, I think we need to postpone this until our next meeting, because I don't believe there is enough uh, consensus on where we're going, and it's already nine fifteen. And we have way too many other things in our agenda still, and I apologize to district staff for that because I know that extending that out is, um, getting a little closer and tied on our timeframe. So, I'm going to make sure to direct our directors to the fact that you need to do some question asking uh, and really figure out what it is you think you want to see. Um, and work with our district staff to get those questions answered so that we can have an approval at our next meeting. We cannot go another, we can't push it out again. So, our next meeting, we have to make a decision on the calendar. And I would also ask, um, Superintendent Goff to ensure that we give ourselves enough time on our next planning for the next meeting to make sure that this has enough time to get through um, all the questions and potential um, discussion we might need. So we'll talk about that at pre-planning. Okay, is that good by everybody? Okay. Thank you. Esperanza, we'll see you later. Thank you for joining us. Um, all right. Moving into, we have a summer school report. Uh, I believe this was Assistant Superintendent Harlan. Hmm, oh no, never, I apologize. Superintendent Goff. I was looking at the actual document, which I believe. Oh, Director Roach, did you have an additional question or comment?
I, I, I just wanted to say, you know, I, I, I don't want to be an impediment to us moving forward. And um, I, I just, I, I wanna put my money where my mouth is when I say that, you know, kids need to be in seats of learning. Um, but I wanna volunteer my help and research as much as I can. Um, Director Larry, if you're willing to have a partner in crime, um, you know, I, um, I would love to work with you on, on being proactive in this.
I think, um, thank you, Director Roach, and it's interesting timing. We do have uh, two parent forums this week, uh, one in English and one in Spanish. And I think that we could take the opportunity to do some initial polling of parents um, to get their take on, on what, uh, changing, changes of the calendar might, might land well with them. So, we'll, staff will work together and get that organized before the parent forums this week somehow.
Nay. Thank you. All right, so on to.
On to summer.
Yes.
Yes, so we were kind of talking about this already, and I don't want to, to rehash too many things. But I do want you to get a feel for who, who has come to the table for the conversation thus far. And you have it in your packet, if you're following along with Chair Batson, you can see. Um, these ideas of what, um, these ideas that are listed within that table are truly the dreams of everybody who represented organizations uh, who joined us in that first meeting. And we left the table open and asked folks just to identify their organization and then identify all the things that they would do if they could. And um, you can see that there's a mix of ideas that both include in-person and, and folks who, who aren't in-person. But I wanna give you um, a broader understanding of who's there. And since this meeting, Lynn County Mental Health has reached out and asked to be a part of this planning as well, which we really appreciate. And I know I'm gonna miss some of the partners as I speak. But we have uh, Millie from Albany Public Library. She is a fantastic partner for us. Um, all of their work will be virtual, but um, which we need that too, because we have families still who are going to choose virtual engagement during the summer. We had Kendra uh, from uh, Jackson Street, and Kendra's fantastic. If you haven't met her, I know some of you have. Um, she is a fantastic advocate for our students who do not have homes right now. And they are um, living either in between homes or living at Jackson Street itself. And some of her ideas were um, really out of the box and ideas that we typically haven't had as part of instruction within a summer school program. Um, we also had Virginia Mallory from LBCC, and they are looking at doing things that are both uh, rigorous academic work, but then also complementary softer work that may be things such as two D, three D art opportunities for our students. So career camps, credit options, non-credit options, doing career pathway exploration with our middle school-aged kids and our younger high school kids. Um, partnering with our STEM hubs so that we really have some, um, uh, exciting uh, activities and learning uh, options for our middle school kids and our high school kids in particular. We've got Katie working on the early learning side, and she, of course, has tons of ideas, many of which are already in um, underway. We've got Tara from GAPS who um, works in the Welcome Center and coordinates incredible work for us. Uh, David Hasmeen as well, and he was advocating for um, multiculturalized opportunities for us to build ways to engage around all of the assets that we each bring to the table. Albany Parks and Rec is there. Again, City of Albany has been a fantastic partner to us. So, they are looking at how do we coordinate their field trips? How do we coordinate some of their summer um, offerings in order for kids to have that physical engagement or other engagement with them, and then move on to work with us? Uh, moving down, of course, we have uh, the YMCA and um, and the Boys and Girls Club, and so both Chris and John have been fantastic uh, to work with and continue to be so. Um, you'll find on the next what, what they see as barriers and it's common. Um, and then you see just kind of a number of dreams listed by staff. Um, at the very bottom, you'll see that um, the Albany Bike Safety Education Program, we also have representatives there for that, thinking about how do we do bike safety education as part of our summer school offering? So that we, um, it again is high interest for our students and can be something that uh, we can partner with academic work. Sometimes some of our programs, um, water safety is one of those um, that are very important for our kids to have and essential, and I wouldn't go without them. They come at the expense of academics when we offer them. So, how do we instead shift them into summer school where kids are expected to go for that week? Um, uh, and it's exciting and it's different, and it's not the same as the academic learning that they have in the classroom. So, lots of really unique thinking that I have appreciated deeply already from the team. Then we um, went through an exercise and, and uh, sharing my screen, it just is prettier than what you see in your packet. So, looking at the potential challenges. And what we did was, we um, used a padlet to just list all of those things that we were worried about in being able to actually offer what we wanted to offer to kids. And um, there were a few big bucket items. One is transportation. That was common across many of our partners that they don't know. They really struggle with kids being able to get to them during the summer and to get home after school. Um, we need to figure out how we increase access for our Spanish-speaking families so that they're aware of the opportunities and that those opportunities suit their needs and fit with their family's schedules. Uh, staffing, qualified staffing was, uh, I would say, aside from transportation, the second biggest concern. Um, everybody, all of our community partners are having challenges with staffing right now. And as we look, and I said this earlier, as we look toward the summer, it will be, uh, could be a potential challenge for us as well, even the academic side of the work. Because um, staff have been working phenomenally hard throughout, um, throughout this pandemic. And many are looking forward to the summer as a time to decompress and step away from their typical teaching and learning experience. What, we also know, however, that we have many staff who would be interested in continuing. And so, we're excited to keep them engaged with our work, but also look for opportunities for some of our um, staff, such as our classified staff, to do some of the sta- to, to partner with some of these partners in some, and meet some of their staffing needs. Um, and then there were some, there are concerns around capacity as well. So, we know that, um, there are different requirements at the YMCA and at Boys and Girls Club than there are for us in the school. It always has been and will continue to be so. And so, until they need some changes to happen, or they can't have more than the number of students that they're currently serving. And that is all dependent upon the governor and Oregon Health Authority and what those decisions are. Um, and so part of our, um, opportunity as we design is to design for multiple potential outcomes and solutions to our work together. Um, but our next step is, I'm meeting with each of those individuals on the list regarding what their thoughts are. We know that we have a lot of resources from the summer funding, um, from the federal government that can fund a lot of this work. Uh, we can fund seventy-five percent of our, of our summer efforts with those dollars coming from the federal government. It needs to be matched, a twenty-five percent match, and we can use our CARES funds to do S R funds to do that match. So, that is likely what we'll do, and um, we certainly have the resources to do it. And we have the, the shared community drive to make it work. So, I cannot tell you how deeply I appreciate all of these people who show up e- e- every day in their, in their work and certainly show up for us every day, and I'm excited about what we're gonna be able to offer during the summer.
Were there any questions or comments from the board? Oh, Assistant Superintendent Harlan, I think you had. Did you have something else?
Yeah, I was just going to add to Director Ward's point earlier in working with LB. Um, we will have a myriad of things for both, um, middle school and high school age that include kind of the career camps, the Metatronics academies. Um, and then options for credit and non-credit classes. They've been amazing to say, hey, basically, if there is a need, you let us know and, and we can kind of make it happen in terms of classes. And all of these, these things are in addition to the summer school opportunities that are happening at either each school or each level. So for elementary, for example, there likely won't be a program, a summer school program at each school, but there will be elementary programs, right? That will kind of do an economy of scale. But at the secondaries, it's certainly true. So students should have multiple opportunities to gain credit, either because they need credit or, um, to get ahead both at their, um, school and, uh, through LB this summer. Um, so we're excited about that.
Lots of great work happening, and we appreciate that for sure. Takes a lot to get some of these things up and running, and there's a lot of community partners helping. So that's great to see for sure. Uh, if there are no other questions or comments, it doesn't look like, okay. Great. If you do have any, you can always reach out to Superintendent Goff or Assistant Superintendent Harlan. And I'm sure as they're planning these things, we'll have lots of updates for us. So that brings us into our bond report. And I see David McKay has joined us. Night, LJ. I saw your notes. Thank you for joining us. Have a good evening.
All right.
As we get
Oh, go ahead.
Madam Chair, before I hand it over to David, I just wanted to say, being respectful of people's time, I wanted to kind of move to a little bit more Q and A kind of format on this stuff, because these are, some of these are items we've been kind of kicking the can down the road for a little bit, and I don't want to rush them. But I also don't want to belabor the point, knowing that a lot of this stuff is things that you have seen before. Um, so I'll hand the floor over to David, and, um, we've talked ahead of time about trying to reduce the monthly bond report to more of a Q and A, um, for timeliness.
We appreciate that. Thank you.
Great. Madam Chair, members of the board, the, the one thing I do want to point out is we did receive the, uh, ODE facility grant. And it was $301,000. That was for South and Meadow Ridge. Uh, that exceeds what we were forecasting of 300,000 for the three remaining schools, and we will still have West. So that's, it was really good news. Um, and so if the board has any questions about the February report, I'd be glad to answer them, uh, for the sake of time.
Director Ward.
Thanks. David, you threw me off when you popped up on the screen sitting on the beach.
Oh, I'm sorry. It's wishful thinking. I have my 30, 35th wedding anniversary coming up at the end of the month and
Awesome. That's
Yeah.
Um, okay. So just my only question was, was about that facility grant. So I'm looking at page six on Board Book, page five of the, of the bond report.
Yes.
So looking at the, um, the line then, the ODE facility grant in the column, it's $198,915 currently. So is, so then is that now 300,000 in addition to the 198?
So we will be updating that, uh, in March. And the reason is, is the, that money, they, um, announced the award in February, but the money is received with the March State School Fund. And so it will be booked to the general ledger in the month of March. And so we will report it in our next end of month report and update, uh, page five, uh, to reflect that additional 301,000.
So I'm sorry. So will that number, will that number then be $300,000 or will that number be $198,000 plus $300,000?
Yeah. So it'll be 198 plus 300. So it'll be, uh, 498,000.
950.
499,000.
Great. Well, that's great news. Thank you.
Yes.
Director Roach, go ahead.
Hey, David, um, I had a question about, so we're getting, we're getting the keys essentially for West on the 15th, right?
Yes.
Um, can you just, because I'm still pretty new to this, kind of tell me what that means? Is there still going to be little jobs happening and the fact that we're actually bringing in more students than we had originally anticipated? Is that, is there going to be any issues with construction and things going on while we have a lot of students using that part of the building?
Uh, we will have construction going on, but it will not impact student learning or, or, uh, the hours that students are in the building. Uh, it'll primarily be focused on the commissioning process, which is that independent third-party review of the mechanical system. Uh, confirming that it's functioning and performing as designed. And then there'll be other, there'll be punch list items and various other work that'll be done when students aren't in the building.
Okay. Great. Thank you.
Yeah. I would say this for just a point of reference for the board members who were on the board, uh, when we turned over Oak Grove. Uh, it, it'll be in a far better, they will have far less work having to occur inside the building than Oak Grove did when we turned that over to the school.
Are there any other questions or comments from board members? I am not seeing any. Okay, so that was related to the, or, uh, bond report. We have a change order 24 for West Albany High School.
The change order is, uh, the, the one that we bring to you every month. Uh, it is those, uh, change devices, PCOS typically is what's reflected there that have been uh, reviewed, um, and recommended, uh, for approval. And then it's collected into a change order. So if there's any questions in regards to that, I'd be glad to answer uh, that or those questions in regards to that change order.
Any questions? Okay. We will entertain a motion on that change order.
I moved to award change order 24 to girding builders in the amount of $138,316.49.
So we have a motion on the table to award change order 24 to girding builders in the amount of $138,316.49. Director Roach.
Aye.
Director Ward.
Aye.
Director Aganaga.
Aye.
Vice Chair Thompson.
Aye.
I also vote aye, so that passes with unanimous consent. That takes us to change order number 25.
Uh, this is for the seismic project, uh, includes two PCOS. And, uh, again, this like, uh, the previous one is, uh, work that needed to occur. Uh, the pricing's been reviewed and, uh, we're recommending, uh, approval. If there's any questions specific to those two, I'd be glad to answer them.
No questions, comments? Okay. So again, we'll entertain a motion on change order number 25.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to award change order number 025 seismic project to girding builders in the amount of
Thank you. So I have a motion on the table to award change order number 25 for the seismic project to girding builders in the amount of $13,941.78. Director Roach.
Aye.
Director Ward.
Aye.
Director Aganaga.
Aye.
Vice Chair Thompson.
Aye.
I also vote aye, so that passes also with unanimous consent. And that takes us to the new transportation facility.
So I wanted to jump in here, um, Madam Chair, members of the board, and, um, update my comments I made here. I realized after I put my comments into Board Book that I had reached back one draft budget when I should have reached back two drafts to the one that you had last seen. Um, and so, um, I wanted to revise those numbers briefly and just make sure everybody was on the same page. So the bad news was I grabbed the wrong one. The good news is I think the story gets actually a little bit better than we thought, and the first story was pretty good. Um, so when we reached back and looked at the last budget that had actually come before the board, and I believe it was December, and reassembled it, I had to go through and, um, kind of do a mind meld with our predecessor and to get the numbers lined back up again. The budget that we're bringing you now in terms of just the cash value on it is just over $500,000 less than that budget that we had proposed in December. Um, and that's based off of the comments that I included in the, in the book earlier, um, which is, um, raw material costs are way up beyond what we had actually predicted when we were talking in December. But we seem to have timed the market fairly well, and the, the bids that have come in for labor are down fair, are down and are in a little bit better place than we thought they would be. And when we put them together, we came out ahead, um, by following recommendations to move ahead quickly in December. So that has paid off for us. The, the other piece in here that works to our benefit is, um, you know, based on my conversations with David, we went back and have kind of reinforced our budget a little bit to account for what we believe is some additional uncertainty in the market. And I wanted to be really clear with the board about why we did this. Um, the draft that came in to you before, I believe, had a 3% contingency in it. We went to a standard 5% contingency on this. This is not so we can make more mistakes or so that we can dream bigger or bring in extra pieces. It's because I don't fully trust the market as we're moving forward. Um, and I want to make sure that we have those pieces in place, um, and that we're ensuring full transparency with the board on it, but that we planned for those things. We know there are unknowns out there. We wanted to have a piece in place for them. And the sep, the second piece that I asked David to insert into this budget is specifically for FFNEs cost escalation. That's that extra $100,000 you see in there. That is not so that we can buy fancier furniture or so that we can buy more lifts or more pieces to cram into the shop. That is because we've seen the cost of steel go up. Lifts are made out of steel. Our quotes are a little bit old, and until you get to the point where you're asking for a quote and you're going to buy, you don't actually know what the cost is on some of those significant components that are going to come into the shop. So I wanted to kind of highlight the fact that these are known unknowns and not, um, just assume them away. So that's why we put those extra values in this budget. So when you kind of include the extra reliability that we've put into the budget, knowing that we don't want to have to come back and ask you for additional money, that, those reliability measures of extra contingency in the FFNE, that is $329,000, which means that this budget that we're bringing and putting in front of you right now is, um, about $836,000 um, better, I guess, would be the way to phrase it, than what we thought it was going to look like in December, which is a good news story. And so I wanted to clarify those numbers and make sure that we were all on the same page with that. And now I'll hand it back over to David.
Yes, it, it, it was good news. We were, uh, a little bit concerned lumber is 130% higher than it was last year at this time. Steel is over 100% higher than it was last year. And with that, uh, there was a softening in the market, and we had incredible bid coverage. I'm sure you remember me talking about some of the bid coverage for other projects that we, like West and South, uh, where we were only having one subcontractor bid, major trade packages. We had five, six, seven on many of these. So it was just, uh, perfect timing. And it, uh, it kind of feels good to be able to, uh, present to the board a project that is beneath the budget that we had said. Uh, so, um, the other is, is that, uh, we have a, a budget format, uh, that, uh, we're, will be changing in reporting transportation going forward. Uh, this is a, a more comprehensive budget. It's our standard format that we use. Uh, although when we work with the school district, we don't, uh, require us to use this format. We always like to tailor it to the school district. Uh, but I think that, uh, this is a better, uh, tool, uh, to report, uh, the various costs on a project. I know that, uh, as we've gone through many of the projects, you've been asking me, where are we with the contingency? This report will be able to give you an update every single month on where we are on those various types of, uh, cost for the project. And, um, in regards to the recommendation, we are, I, I know you've asked me to try to bring things to you twice. Uh, because of the escalation in the market with steel, uh, we really, uh, need to move forward. Uh, we've, uh, would like to be able to give the notice of, uh, award to the contractor tomorrow. Allow him to get the steel contract, the structural steel building contract underway this week so we can lock those steel prices, uh, so we don't have some market escalation that we have to cover with contingency.
And just a reminder, the budget for this, I'm not sure who wants to speak to that, is accounted for where? Just want to make sure everybody has that. It's been a while since we've talked about it, so.
If I could take a, could take an attempt, so, uh, there's a 70% return, uh, uh, reimbursement from ODE. Uh, it's a combination of the, uh, construction excise tax, I believe it's 2.5 million, and then the sale of the property of another 2.5 million. And, uh, alone, I believe it's a full faith and credit, uh, flex fund, uh, uh, of 10.5 million.
Over a period of what time?
Uh, I believe it's 25.
And the facility itself, we anticipate lasting us?
60, 70 years. You know, we're building to the district standard, which is, you know, is, is very durable, long-lasting.
Thank you. Are there other questions or comments? Uh, Director Aganaga, go ahead.
Uh, thank you to the administration team and HMK for kind of lining this out with the finances, because this is kind of what all of us have wanted. Um, so this is great. And so hopefully this will be the new baseline. So I appreciate, uh, both parties. With the sale of the property, is it on Ferry? Is that technically on Ferry?
Um, that's the new property, yes.
What, what's the old property street?
So it's between, um, 11th and 13th.
Okay. Are we, are we just going to put that on the market? Highest bidder, closed day?
So, um, that's actually one of my science projects that I actually have to get sorted out, and I am working on that now. Um, and so, yeah, we, there are some baked in assumptions about what we think that property would go for, but, um, I, I, I need to get a Realtor and get an updated, uh, market value on that property and find out where it lands, because I think some of our assumptions might be under assuming the value. But until we actually have a buyer, you don't really know. Everything's a guess until something closes. So that's one of my science projects is to move that forward. I believe the, the assumptions we've made in our financial plan, I believe are valid.
Yeah, I think you're at least at the minimum with that estimate. So thank you, gentlemen.
Okay, so if there are no other questions, this is one that it sounds like they were hoping we would entertain voting on tonight. So we do have a motion.
Madam Chair, I move to award GMP number one to Emmerich Construction, the amount of $11,798,733 as recommended by staff.
Thank you. So the motion on the table is to award GMP number one to Emmerich Construction in the amount of $11,798,733 as recommended by staff. Director Roach.
Say it again. We didn't hear you.
Sorry. Aye.
Director Ward.
I.
Director Aganaga.
I.
Vice Chair Thompson.
I.
And I also vote I, so that is approved. Unanimous consent, move forward and do good.
We will. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you all.
Yes. Okay, folks, that moves us into new business. I'm just going to do a quick check. Superintendent Goff, are we going to go through, try to get through all of these? Yes? Or no? Okay, I, I half wondered. Oh, we can't hear you, so you're on mute still.
Sorry. Um, no, I, I was just, I was just actually going back to, um, to those items to see, uh, what we need to move forward on. I think we definitely need to discuss the board elections piece because that's timely and OSBA language has not been updated. I would need to defer to Director Buttram. I think the radio frequency identification device, actually I think that he needs as well. So those two board policies certainly need to be discussed. The Chromebook purchase probably needs to happen. And then we can move the IGA for school resource officers. We can move that to next month.
Okay.
And I would recommend we also move the technology report to next month.
That one is actually information only.
Oh, okay, so he's not verbally giving any info. Perfect.
Okay. So again, this is new business. This is the first time we're seeing these things, so we will be able to continue to ask questions and mull things over between now and the next meeting. So the first one on the list was board policies.
Uh, thank you, Board Chair. So what you have before you is board elections policies, BBB. And in your packet, you have, um, the board elections from, let me just want to make sure that they're labeled correctly. Yeah, the OSBA model sample policy. You have the, um, sorry, I'm trying to follow the leader and I got lost. Um, uh, you have the gaps policy, and then you have what we are, um, recommending as well. So in our recommendation that you see, the gray highlighted language is language that is currently in our policy. But it's not included in the OSBA sample policy. Um, and OSBA has reviewed that language that's in gray and has approved that language as optional for us to, to retain, that that's up to, up to us. The red language that's in italics, that is the new OSBA language, the School Wars Association language. Um, the strike-through language is to be removed from current policy based on the OSBA language. And then all of the rest of the language is already the same as the sample policy C from OSBA. So really what you're looking at is the gray highlighted language, and you can, you can decide to keep that or, or leave it. We're recommending that you keep it. The red language in italics is new language that also we're recommending you add. And the strike-through language, we are recommending be removed from current policy. Any questions on that?
Director. I don't think so. I just wanted to clarify too really quick. The, um, the red language is just recommended language from OSBA, which basically just allows for, um, we've talked about this before, allows for there to be up to seven board members. Our, our current standing is five, um, but it does allow for us to, um, vote to change that, which we've, we've had that option all along, correct?
Correct, correct, exactly. It just captures that in writing.
Right. And that's been the case all along, and we've had conversations about this over the years off, off and on for five-person boards versus seven-person boards. And there, around the state, we see a lot more seven-person boards than we do five of our district size. So it just puts into writing what's been out there available to us in the past.
Correct.
But we're making any changes to our existing, um, board dynamics at this point.
No, 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 no. This, this just gives you flexibility to do it if you want.
Policy to match what OSBA has in their policies, so.
Correct. That's correct.
Um, any other, Director Aganaga, did you have a question to or comment? Go ahead.
I, I don't think it changes. I've read it a couple of times now. But I know like Salem is going through a lot right now with, they want to change the voting landscape to make it more like city council, where you got to live in that zone to vote.
No, it actually keeps our zone language that we have, everything in gray. The zone language is actually stuff that's not in OSBA policy, but we're recommending that we keep that language because it's already in existence. It's how you guys are voted in right now with that arrangement.
Thanks, Ben.
And that's the same statewide with OSBA for, for all school boards. Correct?
Well, their recommended language doesn't necessarily include that, no, what's in the gray and the zone assignation? No, that's, that is not, that is our language that was already in there. Yeah.
Uh, Director Roach, go ahead.
So it's not totally related, but I, keeping the information about the zones would be helpful. I, I think the board, um, that, I'm sorry, the maps that we have on our website is really unclear. If there's a way to get a new one of those, that would be, be very helpful. We're getting lots of questions about that as, you know, people were thinking about running for election and stuff.
We actually are working on that.
Awesome, thank you.
Very good.
Were there any other questions or comments on this one? Again, this will come back to us again at the next meeting as old business. So if you do have questions or comments or things you want to get clarification on, go ahead and reach out to district staff between now and then. Okay? Uh, and it sounds like Chromebook purchase is the only other one we were going to do tonight? Yes? Oh, no, I apologize, there were more policies on here.
Yes, there was one more policy that Director, Executive Director Buttram was going to cover that one.
Radio frequency.
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. Uh, this is a new policy related to radio frequency identification and its use with students. Um, and this is one I just wanted to touch on briefly because it's not something we necessarily need the board to immediately approve. And you will probably want to hear feedback on it because people have had concerns about this before. So I wanted to touch on a few of the key issues and then leave this to sit so that we didn't have to rush through it. But we've been kind of kicking this one for a while, and you'll see why it becomes an issue for us. So what the policy does is it just establishes the baseline ability to use radio frequency ID. And then within this policy, we can establish programs to implement its use. Um, and one of the things that has come up when I've shared this draft with folks is understanding sometimes OSBA provides you language that is optional, like you can pick this or pick that. In this policy, there's opt-in language and opt-out language, and they are both valid. Because within our school district, we might run some things as an opt-in, and we might run other things as an opt-out. And so this outlines both of those options that you would choose based on what you were trying to actually do with the information. The other thing that I would want to point out in here for anybody that might have some concerns about how this would be used is the policy puts some very specific limitations on how the technology can be used. Um, it specifically limits it to within ten feet of a reader. Each of the readers has to be very well labeled so that it's not something that's, um, seen as sneaky. Um, also, it's set up so that there's a no-fault opt-out, whether regardless of whether you're using an opt-in program or an opt-out program. At any time, a family or a student who is fourteen or over, older, can choose not to participate in the program anymore. Um, so there's plenty of protections that are in place for this. The reason that I am bringing this to you right now is this is something that we are trying to implement on our school buses. And we need to get the policy in place so that we can start doing some experimentation about how this is going to be most effective for families. Um, and I'll be perfectly honest with you. Um, when we switched our routing software, this was one of the things that was an option for it. And we had planned, I think, to kind of get our feet back under us with the new software and then moved into this a couple of years down the line. Um, with COVID, this became a, a pretty attractive solution to try to track students riding on the bus, to keep track of cohorts. And that's why we thought we were going to be able to implement it. Um, and then two things kind of slowed us down on that one. One was the manufacturer and actually getting the technology and getting it installed was one of them. And the second one is it's actually a little bit harder to get this into the hands of kids than you would think. And so we really needed to kind of back up a little bit, run a pilot program, learn a little bit about how to do this, and then move forward from there. So what we would roll out from this is we would have this as a first reading for you. We would then bring it back for approval. Then we would outline the, the pilot program. There has to be a thirty-day notice period that goes on with that. And then we would be able to begin the experimentation, um, so that we could move forward into this next year. And if we wanted to move to a wider scale, again, there'd be another thirty-day notification, and then we would implement and move forward from there. So there's a few steps between now and wide-scale implementation of this. But step one is getting a policy under consideration and getting a policy in place to allow us to do that. Um, so I don't want to belabor the point tonight, but I did want to at least get it in front of you and answer any initial questions you had about where we thought we were going with this or anything along those lines.
Is this a FOB or a, like a card, ID card type thing?
Um, it's, it's a card just like this. Um, these actually are RFD card, RFID cards. Um, the nice thing about it, and it's one of the things we need to do with the experimenting, is the RFID right now would only work on the school buses, but on the card itself, you can print anything on there you want. So you could print the clever ID card on there. You could print the library scan barcode on there. Um, you can put a lot of those things on top, and it costs exactly the same amount of money to add those extra features on it that would make it more useful to students. And that's one of the things that we need to work with schools and pilot in this is what kind of information makes the most sense on those cards to make them hopefully useful enough that they don't get lost. Um, and then, you know, effective for the kids that need them. Uh, the other one that we ran into where I kind of underestimated the difficulty of this is you don't necessarily want to go too far with it. Because at one point I thought maybe this needs to be an entire student body card replacement. Um, you know, the student ID card, getting timely photographs to the person who has to print the card in time to get it into the student's hands is actually far more challenging than it initially sounded. Um, so this might be something, and I'm going to speculate wildly here, not having run the pilot yet, but this might be something where you have a no photo elementary card that's available, that is an opt-out program. And at the high school level, you might have an opt-in program where you would print the kid an ID card after the fact on demand um, as a way to kind of balance out those two things because, um, parents who have complex schedules, I think, as we've all learned on the bus, this would be a great way. This will tie in, I don't know if you all have seen the, the information that we've rolled out with Ride 360 that has the live updates on the bus times, once we get the kinks worked out on it. It'll actually tell you your stop is scheduled at seven fifty, but today the bus is going to be there at seven fifty-five because they got caught at a traffic light, and that'll update in real time. This would add an extra layer on that where it would send alerts to parents that says, and your kid just got off the bus right here. Um, that's information that would be made available to parents, which would be a really good indicator if the, if your student didn't get off the bus where you thought they were going to, you would immediately know. And that's one of the things that we're trying to do with this.
That's awesome, because that's how you and I first met, because my kid got put on the wrong bus. And so if he would have swiped that card and he goes, eh, eh, like, hey, you got the wrong bus, homie. Yeah, that's excellent. Um, but also coming from a parent who has a kid at Boys and Girls Club, I think we buy one of those new cards at least once a month.
Yeah. So the, the way that they recommend that elementary students use these is by tethering it to their backpack. Um, and that way, they can, they cannot lose it that way, and they can beep on and off the bus. Um, one of the things that I want to experiment with, and I have not, um, talked to Boys and Girls Club about this, I think I could get a ground-mounted station that would tell you your student beeped off the bus at the club and then beeped into the club. They actually went through the door. That, that's my longer-term dream on something like this is to know that, yes, they really did go in there. Or that's one of the things, just for, for everybody's knowledge, in our transportation system, all school bus transportation is built on the assumption that you are only going to take the student from their school to their home of record. That's what all of the tracking is based on. We take kids to all kinds of places on different and varying schedules, and our software is not really efficient at keeping up with that. And this, I think, would help us to close a gap with it and really give parents a peace of mind of knowing where their kids are.
Any other questions or comments or? Again, on this one, I think, because it's new especially, and there's a lot of information there. If you have any questions or want clarification, let's reach out to Director Buttram or Superintendent Goff and see if we can get those answered before next meeting. Thank you for putting that together. I have a few questions, but I'll do them offline. They're not important. Uh, if there are no additional questions, I think we're moving the M3, um, agenda item to our next meeting, it sounds like. And so we'll add that to our pre-planning, and then also, um, just make sure you guys get a chance to look at the information only topic for technology, if you haven't already.
Don't forget about the Chromebook purchase, M2.
I, you know what? I, I tried to go to that earlier, and then I backtracked, and now I'm just skipping over it because it's so late, I can't even think straight.
It's a first reading, and I will be fast, Madam Chair.
Okay.
Okay, so you'll recall a month ago, we brought you an initial Chromebook purchase for about seven hundred. That was to address this year's shortfall, and we approved that one quickly. This one, we do have time for a full two-meeting consideration, but we do want to get the consideration running because we have to get in line behind everybody else who wants to buy a Chromebook. And so the proposal that you see in front of you is the proposal not to buy additional Chromebooks to, but to replace the ones that are sunsetting next year. Um, and so that's one of the things, when we move to one kid, one device, Chrome, currently they're on a five-year cycle, they are moving to a seven-year replacement cycle where Google just stops providing updates for them. And so you kind of have to replace them on a recurring basis. So this is the twenty-one hundred Chromebooks that will be expiring next year, and the purchase moving forward in order to replace them and maintain our one-to-one plan.
How many do we have overall? Do you know?
So I don't have the exact number in front of me, but between Chromebooks and Chrome tablets, it's going to be roughly ten thousand. A rough order of magnitude, one for every student, and then the extras that are floating around for, um, classroom spares and things like that.
And do we anticipate like an annual, um, about this many every year needing to be renewed or?
So as the five-year ones age out and the seven-year ones come in, this number should drop. Um, I didn't do the math, but it's, it's going to be somewhere south of two thousand that will be a recurring annual requirement.
Okay. And I'm assuming then that we can be budgeting for that pretty consistently from this.
And that will also be, we are going to work on a five-year technology plan that we're going to bring to the board. It's going to incorporate this kind of a recurring thing in staff computer requirements and software, and to try to really put together a cohesive enduring plan so it does become predictable.
That'd be great.
Yeah, so the thing to just keep into consideration is the fact that how many we bought this last year in five years? We need to plan for, it's going to be a chunk of change again.
Yeah, and that's what I'm saying. I think that budgeting perspective from now to then, if we can have a plan in place, is going to be really helpful. Yeah. Great. So that again is new business coming back to us at our next meeting. Okay. Uh, any other questions or comments? No? Well, I tried to get us out of here by ten, but we're, no, I'm just kidding. We're pretty close. Uh, okay. So thank you, everyone, for joining us. Uh, again, we will meet again on the, oh my gosh, I don't have the date in front of me. Two weeks. Two weeks.
Nineteenth, I think.
Nineteenth, right? That's what I was thinking too, sounds right, okay. So back on the nineteenth, and we all have our homework to do, it sounds like, before then, especially on calendars. Yes? All right. Uh, have a good evening, everyone. We will adjourn, uh, at ten oh two PM. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, everyone.